Order this regular meeting in the Page County School Board?
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Ms. Alger.
Yes.
Mr. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Yes.
Please pause for a minute of silence as we prepare for the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Huber, do you have any agenda changes or additions?
I do not.
A motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alger, a second by Mr. Huber to approve the agenda.
Ms. Alger.
Yes.
Mr. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Payne.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, Chair, I certify personal matters discussed in closed meeting, section 2 dot 2 dash 3711, Alpha 1 and Alpha 2.
Second. The motion by Mr. Huber, and a second by Ms. Alger to certify personal matters discussed in closed session.
Mr. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Ms. Alger.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Alger, and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Huber.
Yes.
Ms. Alger.
Yes.
Mr. Payne. Yes.
Yes.
Are you going to change this part?
Good evening, Board. I'm going to let Dr. Huber introduce our students, but we're here tonight to recognize our Future Educators Academy.
It's a very exciting evening. We want to recognize two of our students for our Future Educators Academy. First, we will bring up Sophia Baraker. Sophia, we're going to have to take your picture, too, so get ready. I want to talk a little bit about what you shared with us, with our board and our community. Sophia said, "I'm a 16-year-old junior at Page County High School. I have a passion for baking, enjoy participating in Bible studies, and love spending quality time with my friends and family. I am also an active member of the Fellowship of Christian Students. For as long as I can remember, I have wanted to be a teacher. I've always admired the teachers in my life and the positive impact they've had on me, both academically and personally. Their encouragement and guidance have inspired me to pursue a career in education so I can be a part of the change I want to see in the world, helping young children learn and grow. Thanks to this program, I have the amazing opportunity to take college-level courses and work toward earning my associate's degree in education by the time I graduate high school in 2027." Congratulations to Sophia and her family. Next, we'll bring up Emily. Emily, I'm going to read the letter that you submitted to us as well, and we want to offer you the, our congratulations and excitement for you as you enter into this program. "I, Emily Tedder, have wanted to be a part of our community for as long as I can remember. Growing up, my mother was always a part of different organizations benefiting the town, and all my life, I've tried to take inspiration from her. This county means a lot to me, and I've always wanted to give back to this community in some way. As I entered Luray High School, I was contemplating my place in the community. I went from win to win for a while until the beginning of my sophomore year. Our career coach at LHS came to the student body with an amazing opportunity. That opportunity was the Future Educators Academy. When I first learned of the program at Laurel Ridge, it was like everything clicked for me. I found my place in our community, and I found the career path for me. I am proud to be a part of such an amazing opportunity, and I have very high hopes for the future of the FEA program." Congratulations to you and your family.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Guys, if you go, you don't have to stay.
You can now. You can stay.
All right. Dr. Johnson, business operations update?
Yes. Good evening, members of the School Board. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to present on behalf of Human Resources and Business Operations. And we just have a couple of updates, some things that you are aware are ongoing. But just to keep you most recent, make sure I can get this right. So our fleet upgrade to Enterprise Fleet, I wanted to let you know exactly where we stand. I think you probably earlier in the week saw that four of the Nissan Centers arrived. And I changed this slide actually this afternoon because also, just late yesterday, two Chrysler Voyager passenger vans arrived. And then just before I walked into this meeting, I saw an email exchange and a photo that Mr. Turner, our head mechanic, working with Enterprise Fleet, believed they've identified a pickup, and they're now identifying the plow pieces and the making, Corey is making sure that we get things like snow plows that match what we have, that we know we can work on. So he's really paying attention to detail on this, which has given us great leadership on this. And then there are two more Chrysler Voyager passenger vans on the way. The next slide, I thought I would show you and show the public. Yeah, go ahead.
How many passengers were they held?
Seven, the minivans, yeah. I thought you would be interested in knowing what have we been driving and what are we going to be trading for this. I didn't have them on the slide to put all four mileages. So those Ford Torres, I actually chuckled with Corey Turner yesterday. I was over at the garage, and we have some white Ford Torres. One of them is number 112, and I know that because 13 years ago when I began in HR, that was one of the cars we used here, Dr. Thomas, myself, Mr. Smith before me. So the newer of those Torres has 219,000 on it, and that, the one I'm talking about is 2005, still being used, all the way up to 292,000. The same is true with the minivans that we've been using. You can see Pacifica and a Dodge Caravan. The Crown Victoria, that came up in one of our meetings, I don't know, four, six months ago. And I walked out of here thinking, "I should have clarified," and I didn't. What used to happen is we used to get vehicles donated to us. So we never bought a Crown Victoria ever, and you know, because you can think about, you know, why would they do that? To transport. But what used to happen is sometimes the sheriff's office would come across vehicles.
Police car.
And that's how we would get those vehicles, not knowing that we would use them as long as we have. But, you know, it just, this just goes to show the need, number one, and how thankful we are, and how thankful the drivers are going to be, driving vehicles now that have all of the safety components to come with these 25s and 26 vehicles, as opposed to these vehicles that are 2005s and 2007s, and, you know, they don't have any of those safety features on them from back then. So this is fantastic. I wanted to make sure that you saw, and I think I've said this to you all one time before, to make sure the public knows as well, though, that, you know, student-first is the strategy here. So these are going to be used for transportation within the county, outside of the county. We take students to Charterhouse and Minnick, and, you know, we put a lot of miles on every day. Corey's plan is two of those brand-new centers are going to be rotated with the two high school driver ed vehicles. Because what better place to put our cars with the best, most recent safety features? And those cars still have life in there, so we'll use them. But we want, you know, we want our driver ed and our students, you know, to come post on this.
You know, it's a testament to the quality of the maintenance programs that we've got in our division.
It is.
Really is.
It is. I will tell you, if I can go back to the other slide real quick. The two Chrysler Voyager passenger vans are 20, they're brand-new 2025s. The reason we got those instead of 2026s, where we could have shopped around a bit further and a bit wider, is we couldn't start school without them. We were, one was sitting over there needing a new transmission, and Corey said, "I can't spend $3,000 to $5,000 on a new transmission, knowing that this is so close." So you're right, the crew over there are fantastic. Yeah. Any other questions on the fleets? I also want to give you an update on the architectural project and the study that's being done. On the right side, I just left that from the slides you've seen in the past so that you could remember who the team is, the civil engineers and the demographics people and so on. The left is the update. So as of today, the RRMM team have reviewed, the FCAs are the facility evaluations that we had done by Bureau Veritas. So not only have they received them, they have now reviewed them for every building. They also have all of, they call them as-built drawings, and those are any and all of the records we have on our, the old rollout architectural drawings as well as the CRG maps. So they have all those, and they are reviewing those currently, having already looked at the Bureau Veritas reports. We also now have scheduled September 23rd, 24th, and 25th. They will now be on site, again, with the Bureau Veritas and the architectural drawings in mind. So those dates have been scheduled. So a lot is going on in the architectural side. The demographic, geocoding, and districting side, they are currently looking at our historical data, enrollment, and any and all of the data they can pull. And then we consciously decided to wait until after October 1. One, our enrollment stabilizes, and I know Dr. Huber's going to talk about that later on tonight. But two, so does the placement. So early on, we had students, even this week, going from one middle to the other middle. And so we want to make sure that they're looking at data that's current, that enrollment is current, bus routes that are stable and settled down. So that's why we waited till October 1 on that. The programming, educational adequacy and capacity studies, they're in the process now. And some of this, I won't do a good job of answering some questions, I will tell you, because some of this, they're going to come and present to us on exactly the details of this. But they are establishing guidelines currently on how they're going to measure the adequacy. You know, are we adequate? Are we doing things proficiently? How do you measure that, and how do you report that out? But that's part of their work. They're establishing those guidelines now, and then they're going to put together matrices that can be used and can be compared, and then can be presented to you as a board and to the public and to the supervisors. So a big part of this, you know, foundational groundwork is not only collecting data, but then being able to report it out so that the stakeholders understand it and understand where, you know, why a recommendation might be made. Yeah. And then the energy analysis, they have several years' worth of our utility consumption charts now. They have that data, and their engineers are currently analyzing all of that, again, back to the buildings, back to the drawings, and, you know, what does the data tell us on that? So there's a lot going on, although most of it is preliminary work at their level. I just wanted you to know where we were at today. Speaking of the data, I'm going to invite Mr. Runyon to the podium. The other thing that plays into this study is assuring that we can tell them the story of our buildings to this point. Because obviously, they can pull a lot of historical data and energy analysis, but we need to tell the story of how we're putting money into these buildings, where we're putting money into. And so Mr. Dykes and Mr. Bell, actually, over the last six months, had been working on our work order system and tracking and coding. Our maintenance team is starting to do a very good job of exactly what are they doing? What time did they arrive? What time did they leave? How many man-hours did we spend at a site on what kind of job? And so with that in mind, Mr. Runyon's going to give you an update on that just to show you some of that work that's going on that will tie back to the RRMM project.
Good evening, Board members. Maintenance men were real busy this summer, so this report is all of the locations, categories, and type of work they did from June 9 through August 22, so right up to Friday before school started. This slide talks about work by location, so each school, I mean, work orders submitted and what kind of work was done, or each location, I should say. And middle schools were the highest. So when I was talking with Mr. Williams, I'm like, "Can you tell me why those are the highest?" He said, "Those are the ones that have the barge units, and they were on the preventative maintenance schedule, so they would have had a lot of things like the filters being replaced, cleaning coils, all the things to keep them running." So that's, that took place this summer with those programs. This one is by category, so I'll touch on a few of these. Electrical, that would be rewiring, adding some receptacles to offices and classrooms, replacing sensors, switches, light bulbs, and light fixtures throughout the division. Carpentry work, we're hard at work at redoing the post-grad classroom, so that's where a lot of that work is going. And on doors, windows, any roofs that are leaking, they check that out. Plumbing is repairing toilets, urinals, replacing sensors and on the sinks and stuff like that in the bathrooms, and they do their, part of the preventive maintenance is bathroom inspections routinely throughout the year. HVAC, they're changing filters, coils, doing some repairs, like replacing contactors and compressors. Safety, that's our cameras, our door sensors, and the badge system. And some of those, we've had to call and have to look at, because some badges weren't working right, and they've replaced some things. And then under general maintenance, that would be painting, that would be playgrounds, that would be all the mulch that we just put on the playgrounds, they were ready to go, and mowing, that are mowing for us. They've been busy. They've been doing a lot this summer. And then the next slide is the corrective orders versus the scheduled or the preventative, and that's, that lays out. So the preventative, those are the routine checks, and they are in the system scheduled, so they, those work orders pop out when it's time, and Mr. Bell assigns them to whoever, and they go get those done. And so those are already built into the system, scheduled every year. Routine checks and replacements of filters, they're checking belts, they're greasing, and then this is scheduled throughout the year. The corrective ones are the things that come up day-to-day. A light bulb's blown, and they need that, or need ceiling tile replaced. The guys are going from one end to the other a lot each and every day. Question?
And if I can add, we sat in here yesterday and had a leadership meeting, and Dr. Huber always talks to leadership meetings with positives. And Mr. Williams was smiling from ear to ear because we are fully staffed on the maintenance team. It's been, it's the first time in six months or more that we have been fully staffed, so we're feeling really good about it.
And some very good additions to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hopkins, grants update?
Good evening, Board. Dr. Huber, first off, thank you for this evening, allowing me the opportunity to come and give you the grant, so. I'll just stand over here. So what you're going to see tonight is a bunch of different grants that currently Page County Public Schools is participating in. Keep in mind that every grant is different, every grant has different rules, different people to contact at the state, different dates of employment, different dates of reimbursement. Everything's set. So the first one we're going to talk about is Title 1. Title 1 is basically meeting the needs of all students. You can see there on this slide, the word Year 25, which we have at the end, is $1 million. It's what we're projecting, and we have that final allocation yet, we will here October. We still have a remaining balance of $137,000 in Word Year 25. So keep in mind, Title 1, as we've talked before, goes to salaries. So already 95% of our Title 1 grant pays for our title of teachers and our title of assistants. 5%, really technically, it's 10%, or 1%. But anyway, there's parent-family engagement. So to every school, it's required by the Title 1 grant to have a Title 1 activity event. So there's funding set aside to fund those activities, those things, those events, for each of the elementary schools, for elementary students participation. Title 2, Dr. Johnson and I, our worlds intermingle in Title 2. Title 2 is to increase staff and make them properly licensed and endorsed. It's also used for incentives. So part of what we're engaged with, I teach, lots of people in our division are going through that process to get their endorsement in a specific option area. I teach helps them. We then reimburse them for participating. So we're projecting for Word Year 25, $137,000. Again, there was that date allocation. And then for Word Year 24, we have a remaining balance. Title 3 helps support our English learners. We, today, I was able to meet with our English learner team. Currently, our numbers are growing, so you're aware. We're at least 80 English learners across the division, which is huge. It's typically, historically, it's been 50-ish, so we've got an increase in population. Our grant is based on the, so Word Year 25 is based on last year's numbers, so as our numbers increase, we'll see our grant increase. So right now, there's $5,000 that our Title 3 works for the students, and that's a very... The rules on Title 3 are very, very tight, very stringent. It can only be materials and supplies that support students specifically. Above and beyond what the division is responsible. Or I can invest in teachers, which is typically what we're doing. Title 4, Title 4 is the fun part. I love Title 4 because we get to buy really cool things for our kids and get teachers STEM things. I've partnered with Mr. Samples and his team, which has been great. We bought everything from, there's 3D printers to down here in the bottom right corner, all kind of STEM ability things and things that kids love. So unfortunately, because of salaries and increasing salaries, we need our budget. A portion of Title 4 gets transferred to Title 1, which is an allowable use of the ones. But I did set aside this year about $10,000 for Title 4 to continue to support our initiatives, specifically our 3D printers, which all of our schools now have. All right. So y'all knew about those, right? Those are the grants you know about. So these are some of the grants you might not know about. So this is the SIT, or School Improvement Grant. This was given to us very late in the year, but we're doing our best to spend it down. This is very targeted, so it's either for targeted. TSI, which is here, Target Support Improvement. APSI, which is Additional Target Support Improvement. We have two schools in those categories. LES is TSI, and then Page Middle is APSI. Those are the amounts. This grant has all kinds of rules, which is a lot of interesting fun. But we've been doing a good job of both investing in our staff with professional development and getting the materials and supplies to support that professional development, which is... Ms. Miller, I'll give a shout-out to you. It's been very helpful. She's personally experienced. The VTS, oh, I didn't skip, sorry, sorry. VTSS grant, so the Virginia Tier Systems Support. This grant basically is applied for every year, and we've gotten a number of years in a row. We reapplied for this year and asked for a $40,000 request. This, again, is supporting behavioral, social, emotional, and creative activities. So what the division has used this specific grant for is working dealing him. It's a professional development for specifically targeted reading for elementary teachers, specifically reading specialists, K3, train some 4, 5 teachers, depending on you. But that's where this money has been out. Another acronym for you. Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. This was new for this year. This grant came in two pieces, which was a lot of fun, right, Dr. Huber?
Yes, sir.
LES got $14,000, and we were specifically told we could only buy just right readers. So that was, which is, it's, they're nothing more than decodable readers. We had to buy them, which we did. So we gave those out to our pre-K students and our kindergarten students. This, if you look here, it's in birth through 12. They were very much targeting early literacy development, and that parent-family protection. So that's where that $14,000 went. The $30,000 for Page Middle went to a professional development, very familiar, but a professional development specifically for special education teachers, and that's where that money went. So there's some of that money still left, and we're working on that now. They got professional development, getting the material and supplies. You're familiar with this grant. This is a community schools grant, which basically does all kind of fun stuff across our division to bring our families into the school, or we go to them and do events. This is a two-part, so last year, we had 281,550, which we utilize for all kind of great things for our kids, everything from flexible seating to fun events, and some pictures from last year from a fall event. So this is the kind of stuff that the schools are doing, everything to supporting our higher education causes. We've got washing machines and laundry, or everything our kids and our families need. They're currently waiting on the award letters. I'm spending this and stuff like that. This is a new grant. This is the micro grant, which we got this year, which is $10,625. We use this funding specifically, again, this grant was written or given to a specific purpose of helping develop a whole self-free environment, again, engaging our families. And we wrote in the grant to help also increase our attendance. So this money will support two events. We're having a day event for the students. Eddie Cortez is going to come speak to our three, five kids about their dream, their new bid, engaging, making sure they come to school, have attendance. There will be invited to, September 4th, evening, there's a meal for five, six, which is in the table. And then at 6:00 o'clock, Eddie's going to present to the adults more broadly. So the tidings grant was money left over, are you ready for this, from 2021? They went back, and they, the state of Virginia did not want to give that money back to the federal government, so they told us to reallocate it, so we did. We were able to use this funding to support our Kickstarter kindergarten program this year. It's a big step. So in total, the division has benefited from these grants to about $2 million. So which is absolutely amazing to think about, with that kind of money to go back to our kids and our families and our communities. Questions?
I have a question on the English learners. Since we were at about 80, now it was 50, I believe. Is that a one-year change from 50 to 50 Sunday?
That's an increase of over probably three years.
Three years. And I guess that increase, how do you budget for something?
So there are rules that require us to have so many teachers per so many students based on what their level is, which is a cool formula to play with. So currently, we have two L teachers. Dr. Johnson and I worked on this about a year and a half ago, bringing on an additional L teacher. So right now, our two L teachers are meeting the needs of those students. If we were to continue to increase, I would have to come back to Dr. Huber, Dr. Johnson, and say, "Here's where we're at." So two teachers over all the schools that we have?
Mm-hmm. The challenge is, that's a master's-level program, so finding staff is no easy feat.
I think that's 40 kids per, I mean, that's a lot. That's all the big cases.
And a cross.
Yeah, the entire vision.
What are our projections for growth on that? It's a very transient community. We have the, you know, we have a base family here in our community. A lot of those people will come from wherever they come from, right? And they'll come here, and then they decide this isn't community for them. Last year, we had one student, I think, came twice. And it's two teachers. Were they based out of the surface school? We were elementary, Luray Elementary. That's where...
Majority of the students were there.
Majority are at Luray Elementary or this side. We also have a big population in the south.
So before you sit down, I got a question for you. I know that you manage the watchdog and mentor program, and I wonder if you could just, for the benefit of the folks in the county, talk about the needs right now of the watchdog and the mentor program and... And, and what schools uh, probably would be the most needy, I guess, of those programs and kind of what they are. So the folks understand how, how valuable they are to the, to the division.
Sure. So talk to watchdogs first. So watchdog is dad, dads and great students. Um, those are, those both, um, all four elementary schools are hosting that. Loure Elementary is the senior in that, as they've been doing it. Going into their third. The other three, Stanley Shando and Springfield have just started this year. So if you need wise, probably the three, the latter three. They do a kickoff event here in the fall, so folks can look for a flyer and talk about that. Basically they'll bring in pizza. And basically bring the dads in and have them sign.
And what do you, what are the expectations for?
For dads and great students? It really depends on the individual schedule, right? As far as if they can come once a week, twice a week, every other, you know, it's basically how they can volunteer once a month. Cause they come in the school, they get to be with their kid for half of the day. And then the mentor program, um, basically that is a once a week commitment for 30, 35 minutes with an individual student or two. Basically reach out to me and I will give training and background check.
Do you find that the uh, watchdog program, does it feed into the mentor program?
Hmm, nah, two different sets of folks, right? The, the mentor program is more of a commitment on a weekly basis where watchdogs is even from, you know, our grunts come once a month. Then that's his.
This is year three of the mentor program or year two? We're going into year three, right? Sorry, I think.
I think it's three. I know Paige Middle, Paige Middle's done it the longest they're the scene.
Well, not to add more work to anybody's plate, so then it's a lot, but eventually it would be neat for us to track at least disciplinary records. So say, okay, maybe the first year this kid had five referrals all year, second year, just to kind of see if there's improvement, just to be able to track the program. Eventually one day, maybe.
It's possible. I'll just be honest with you. Some of those kids come and go, right? So your, your data is not going to be a little solid.
Yeah.
I mean, I could take and look at, you know, Mr. Painter, who's been with ex-student for last year and try to see if it's the same student he was with previous year.
So it's not consistent.
Sometimes mentors will switch around. Sometimes kids just move out of the county or no longer need a mentor because they've improved and they're on track. It's supposed to really be a temporary, you know, we get you going and get you back on track and then we go on to the next student.
But it's, but it's extremely valuable program now, is what I think we want to try and communicate to our, uh, our, our folks in the county. And we need, and we need mentors.
Absolutely.
How many would you, to stop right now, I mean, I don't know, how many, how many would you say we need right now?
Mentors?
Yeah, do you have any idea? How many could you use?
Last year we had 32 and I know there was kids still.
Are the mentors, are they invited to our community?
Yes.
They are.
Like the community events that we do?
Well, that nerve, these are the gatherers.
Yes, yes, yes. That's all in that balance. Sure, which meeting we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, VSBA policy update?
Good evening, board. I'm back in front of you again with some informational policy updates. Um, there were eight that were sent to you this month, none of which had any significant changes, nothing that was sent to us from VSBA. We just, it's time to review and we're sitting there doing some wording clarity and so forth with that. So if you have any questions, I can address those as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Johnson, Division Crisis Plan?
Yes, thank you. Um, each year in August, uh, we like to bring a, a final uh, product to you in regards to the Division Crisis Response Plan. So several of these slides I'll be able to move through quickly because you've seen them.
Right.
But it all, it stacks on top of one another. So I wanted to, and so tonight, uh, the last couple of slides are really sort of the culminating crisis manual and what's in there. And uh, and then we do ask, uh, we, it's informational over the course of the summer, including tonight. And then we ask for your approval of the crisis response plan because then uh, you know, we have some teeth in that. As well as the Department of Ed been able to see how seriously we take it all the way through our community, being able to see it and you all been familiar with it. As you know, uh, we spent quite a bit of time late spring and through the summer on our trainings. So Alice is our active shooter response training for our, um, for our staff. And all leadership were trained in Alice uh, this year. And then leadership then were prepared to train their staff when they came back, back to school meetings. And so as a division, our employees should be able to speak the same language and talk about response uh, practices. If there should be an active shooter. Um, LifeSpot, you know, is the app, security app that we have. That if somebody sees somebody, they can alert the, the app. Uh, Mr. Runyon and I conducted several days worth of training a week or so ago with new hires. Uh, so all of our returners have it and the new hires. One thing to note about LifeSpot is it's not required because it's an app that you would put on your personal phone, but it is strongly encouraged. Cause I can't imagine ever being in a position where I saw something and didn't have it. So, uh, but we don't provide the phone, so you can't acquire it. And then the third step to that, which we've just completed is the actual school crisis emoji management uh, and medical emergency response plan, which our, which is our living, breathing document that I've alluded to over meetings that contains all of the specifics and the action steps. Um, as you know, principals are very much engaged in this. Uh, everything from paying attention to their buildings and conducting walkthroughs and checklists and having SROs and step with them. They submit those to me. We review them. We make them part of the plan. And then as well, we have a very detailed drill schedule, um, fire drills, tornado drills, earthquake drills and so on. And we know exactly when those are going to occur and we're able to notify families and central office knows what school is doing, what when. So a lot of time and energy into this to make sure that we are well-prepared. Um, we also pay very close attention to the surveys that go out through the VDOE. Uh, actually I was able to review our division-wide. The VDOE will take the data and they'll put it together. So we can look at trends, we can look at uh, at um, the sentiment of culture and climate in any given building or thrust of division. And we use that obviously because that's part of our safety plan. We need to know, uh, um, you know, where are the, where are the bumps? Where are the concerns? Uh, what help do we need? What school councils need to be involved? Um, and so we get that data back from the DOE in August and we just got that a week or so ago and that's been reviewed. Um, the crisis manual, as you know, it's very confidential, so it's certainly not something I can put up on the screen and, and walk through. But what we, what we will do is uh, after tonight, once, once we've had the whole plan from beginning to end approved by you all. We will take the school, the confidential crisis plan and we will be very general with the parts that we can't share. So that parents do know that we addressed those parts and then we will be very specific with the things we can be specific about. And so there is an opportunity then for parents, we create a parent version of the crisis manual and we, we advertise that, we put it on our website. Um, um, so uh, so within the crisis plan, I just bulleted out some of the main categories. Um, each school has a school-specific crisis team. Uh, in that list, people are named. Who's doing what? The articulation of responsibilities, what's somebody's role? Who's, who's, you know, who's helping the nurse carry out what equipment? Who's bringing out what safety equipment? Who's in charge of special needs students that may be in an area that it may be assistance needed? So that is very, very specific and it's fluid, as I, I think I've reported before. So if a staff member were to leave, uh, we, we can, we, we can change it. The one document and it changes everywhere through Google Docs. Also, there's not one person assigned to any one thing. There are backups assigned. So uh, we feel very strong about that. Central office support team, uh, everybody up here has a role. It's articulated in the crisis manual. We met in this room this summer. We took a deep dive into that. We have a lot of new folks on the team this year. Uh, and there's just no room for somebody not to know what their responsibility is in a crisis. So uh, we spent a lot of time on that. Facility awareness, um, you know, the communication protocols, you know, we have the maps, we have the AED maps. We track even, even the batteries, when do they expire? We have all of that in our crisis plan. And uh, as I mentioned, safety drills as well. Um, our law enforcement partnerships are wonderful. They really are. Uh, we met uh, just a couple of days ago, uh, Dr. Huber and I would, would some of the law enforcement leadership, uh, the SRO leader. We have great flow of communication back down through the SROs. The SROs have great relationships with the school administrators. It's something that I think Page County can hang, hang its hat on. It's a very special relationship. Um, as you know, we have once a month, we have county planning meetings, the sheriff attends, the major attends, the police chiefs at all three towns attend. Uh, fire and rescue attend. Um, so we, we feel good about those. And then uh, you know, how do we communicate this back out to the parents? We articulate that in the crisis manual as well. Uh, you remember Ms. Uh, Ms. Heischman presented to you a few meetings ago, the student parent handbook and how, you know, that has just improved leaps and bounds over the last couple of years and it ties this together as well. Um, the parent crisis manual that I mentioned, that we'll be putting out, that mirrors the crisis manual as much as we can. And then just information, apto G is the app we use. We can do mass notifications, as you know. Uh, we can do notifications to specific groups at specific schools. We can do notifications to specific employee groups, drivers only, you know, that sort of thing. Uh, and the apto G screenshot platform there, uh, we can choose, we can use that to put a, a Facebook post up. Uh, the different social media platforms as well, that will do that for us. Mrs. Tricia Runyon uh, is our division coordinator for, for the messaging piece of that. And so she's very involved in this as well. And of course we use our website as well. Um, just to finish, um, you know, who's involved, as I said, this has been a, this is pretty much a May through August. Every year, as soon as school is out, we're looking at it again to get it back ready for the next school year. And so you name it, the superintendent, the superintendent's leadership cabinet, the division leadership team, administrators, school leadership teams, SROs, faculty staff are all involved in this. Um, and they all understand, they are accountable for our response procedures. They're accountable for training, being trained, being present, uh, understanding what their responsibility might be, um, very site-specific. And then they have to be able to demonstrate that they know and they understand. And so a lot of trust goes into this as we train principals and principals train staff and school leadership teams articulate out. Um, but I think it's done with integrity. And so uh, we, uh, we like to kind of, in August, be able to bring you a finished product and then ask for your approval, which I will do so in the action item tonight, so that the Department of Ed also can put a stamp of approval that Page County is, is well called at it.
I do. I, um, so Dr. Johnson, thank you very much. And we, and I appreciate how much work you guys do on this, this plan. It's absolutely critical for our county. You never know what's going to happen.
Sure.
But uh, what I'm curious of is, is our plan integrated with the county plan? Do they, do they have, do they take this integrated to county?
So when you say county, uh, from a legal, meaning.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Meaning so law enforcement and emergency services, yes.
Okay.
Uh, in regards to administration at the county building, uh, I, I don't have that. Now, does our, does our sheriff, do our, uh, losing this title now, the county uh, emergency response coordinator, they're all involved in it. And uh, so that's locked tight. Now, I can't speak to like the board of supervisors themselves, or the county administrator. I don't know that.
I would also say we do have an MOU with the sheriff's office.
Right.
In fact, I was just on the phone with the sheriff this week, um, to update that MOU through 2028. So we do have some good communication back and forth, um, on how inter-agency operations work.
Okay, good. That's, that's key.
I know that's a lot of work and in light of what's taken place this weekend, that this was brought up to show how thorough that you guys are today.
Well, I would like to, I would like to say publicly, thank you to the school board because you all know the, the history of what we tried to accomplish last year. Uh, and yet now Mr. Runyon and Mrs. Clark are also very active in this and three heads are much better than one. You know, there's nothing more important in my mind.
Maybe we'll get the, maybe that grant will come back again one day.
It might reapply and maybe it would have a different outcome.
Ms. Jeffries, Nutritional Services Update?
Good evening, board members. I come before you tonight to give you some updates from the Nutritional Services Department. Uh, the first kind of exciting thing is uh, in working with our managers this year, we came up with both motto, mission and vision statements. Um, so our motto is feeding our future. We're looking to really promote that, um, and make it that when people hear that, they know we're talking about Page County Public Schools Nutritional Services. So we kind of talked about, you know, give me, you know, I said to the managers, give me a tagline or something. And uh, somebody said the quicker picker-upper and that's, and then everybody knew they were talking about bounty. And I said, I want when people see here, feeding our future, I want them to think of us. So we're going to be trying to really promote that, um, through the upcoming year and through our social media platforms. Um, additionally, the managers work together to come up with our mission, which is that we feed kids today so that they can build a stronger tomorrow. And then our vision is that we are uh, being able to feed minds and bodies for strong kids and a stronger future. So because I was going to be before you today, I thought it was really important to share with you that, that that is a collaboration of our staff to come up with those three pieces. And that is truly what we do each day as we're working towards those three things. So we just finished summer feeding, um, and I thought I was going to have a final, final number, but I'm missing a couple of pieces of data. I know that we served more than 68,514 meals. Um, again, when I locate the other two pages, we'll add on some more meals to that. Uh, what was really impressive was with the addition of Feed Up, our second feeding unit, we more than doubled the availability time for our families. Um, so each of our daytime stops doubled and then we went from uh, one nighttime stop, which was 30 minutes to four nighttime stops that were an hour each. So, uh, and we found much success with those evening stops. So we are excited to continue those in the future. And then uh, special thanks, the mechanics, um, and maintenance staff, putting that second unit together for me was uh, so important. And the fact that we were able to do so much of it in-house, I, I cannot thank them enough. Uh, we had quite a few student workers that came along and helped this summer. Uh, and we mined them for some information about how we could make the school year better and how can we market to the, to other students during the school year? So they made some signage for us for this year. And then uh, all the employees that were part of the team, and I, I say all of the employees because nutritional service staff members are part of our summer team. But our summer team is at least half made up of transportation workers, assistants, teachers, regular school substitutes. Um, and if we didn't have all of those people as part of our PCPS team for the summer, we would not be able to accomplish what we have. So thank you to everyone who was part of that process. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, um, I know that there was some news lately uh, about meal pricing in terms of some of our neighboring divisions. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody here in Page County was very clear on how we approach pricing of meals for students and adults. Um, first of all, all of our PCPS students are allowed to get one breakfast, one lunch and one supper each day at no cost to them. And that uses two separate federal programs. The first program is the Community Eligibility Program, which we call. The first program is the community eligibility program, which we call CEP. And that is how we fund breakfast and lunch. And then our supper program is part of the at-risk child and adult food care program, or the at-risk C A C F P. The government likes acronyms as seen by Mr. Hopkins. And that again is our supper program. And then our adult meal pricing is set through the federal government using a calculation tool. And I attached the calculation tool to the board agenda so that anybody who may be listening, I also put a copy of it in the packets for the board for this evening. But the federal government is very specific on how to calculate those adult meal prices. And the first section is specifically for people who are pricing C, school food authorities, so SFAs. That would be someone where you're in a school that children are also charged some sort of cost for meals. So the very top section does not apply to Page County Public Schools. The second section, adult meal price calculation guidelines for non-pricing CFAs, that's where we are. I went ahead and filled in the, the table amounts based off of what we get. So you take the free lunch reimbursement plus the differential if you're eligible for it, plus the performance-based reimbursement if you're eligible for it. We're, we're eligible for both of those things. We get both that lunch differential and the performance-based. Then we have to add in the amount of money that the United States Department of Agriculture gives us in entitlement money that we get to spend on U.S. products that come through the government program. And then we get at that minimum adult meal price of the $4.84, which you guys saw at a school board meeting, I think the last school board meeting maybe. And then you generously let me get that up to $4.85, so I didn't have to keep pennies at the school. And similarly, breakfast, they just take the federal free rate that, that we are paid for a free student. And then that is the minimum price for breakfast. And our after-school program is not through the National School Lunch Program. It again is through that at-risk C A C F P, so they have a different process. But that is all that I had for you guys tonight, just kind of a, hopefully some really good news and then some details on how we come up with some of the things we do.
Great efforts and 68,000-plus meals in a summer is a lot, it's a lot. So that's impressive for you and your team and all those that supported.
Thank you.
Really good job, no seriously, you guys did yeoman's work.
Yeah, and it makes such a difference throughout the summer. I heard so many families talking about the food or the bread that they got and how they, you know, the lunch meat, so it makes a big difference.
And thank you for increasing your evening hours. It's people, it's easier to get to you guys, and I'm glad you noticed and you extended that time. That's, that's a lot, lot more of your evening taken up too, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trina.
Mr. Samples, ACSC grant?
Good evening, board members. I'm excited to come back before you and present a third proposal for our advancing computer science education grant from the VDOE. As before, we're trying to integrate computer science into critical thinking skills into core classes. This proposal goes back to elementary school, so it focuses on K through five, includes 18 teachers, just like we did last year. And they will work with our ITRTs to come up with lessons and iteratively go through them to develop them with planning sessions, producing exemplar models. And we upload them to the Go Open Virginia platform, making them accessible to other educators throughout Virginia. The goal of Go Open Virginia is to address the learning goals of the profile of a Virginia graduate and VDOE is a collaborative, collaborative partner in that. Teachers and ITRTs go through that development process. And upon the completion of a grant, we'll share it a full professional development, which we actually just had the last year's grant completed at the professional development day, what, last Friday, I believe, before school started. And that was very successful, I heard that went very well across the entire day. So we do have a little bit of money to allocate to some different areas. Participants receive a stipend for project completion, meaning they see it through to the end and present at the final thing. The total amount for this allocation is $17,325. Funds are also allocated for substitutes to cover classes while teachers come and go through the lesson development with the ITRTs. They're also going to, ITRTs are going to also be stipended to train and facilitate the process outside of school hours, amongst some other things. The total amount for this allocation will be $29,820. Funds are allocated offset FICA, that's 360659. And funds are allocated to purchase materials and consumables for teachers in the classroom, that's $21,600. Total funds requested through this grant is $72,351.59. If you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Huber?
Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. I'll start again by reiterating how strong our team is. Hopefully that's been evident in the presentations you've seen this evening, which I know we had a lot there, but there's a lot going on and we've been busy. So we wanted to make sure that everybody had information about all of the, the great work that's happening. I have a short update for you this evening. And I'll start with Row the Boat Awards. As you all know, that's our theme for the year is to row the boat. And there's, there's many reasons behind that. That number of 84 is already outdated, I just checked a minute ago. I was multitasking, just so everyone knows. It's up to 97 as of this evening. And this is a way that we recognize our staff for demonstrating teamwork, collaboration, being positive, solution-oriented, supporting their kids and their colleagues, and helping us move forward on our positive pathways. As we've started school, I'm, I'm just so excited and thrilled about the positivity and the teamwork that I'm seeing as we travel around in buildings and as I talk with folks. And I wanted to share that that is something we will continue to do throughout the year. We sent it out on our messaging platform this afternoon, I believe, I think it was also on Facebook. And it's just a way that, number one, you know, things can get tough, but we also need to remember that a lot, a lot of things are really good. And we've been able to recognize 97 folks already in just a week for their hard work. And every one of those creates a certificate that I sign personally and then send out to the staff member. And then we'll have the list of everybody each week and we'll send it out to the division so you can see. Because there are little things that happen all day, every day, that nobody ever gets recognized for. And we really thought, in, in terms of Row the Boat, that this was a way that we could, we could really emphasize that. So I'm excited about this and that will continue. It's also linked on our website. Parents can fill it out, students can fill it out, colleagues. It's for any staff member in any role and it'll happen all year long. So I sign them every single day, so wanted to share that. Just a quick enrollment update, as you know, we started school this week. It's been a great start and you can see where we stand in terms of enrollment as compared to last year. It's looking positive. Remember, this does not include pre-K. So these are our numbers as of today, this morning, and shows that we're in the positive margin, which we were not at this time last year, based upon our budgeted ADM of 2830. So I'm really excited about that. I will update you as a board and as a community, again, probably in the second September meeting. That's when things will stabilize a little bit. It's a little early right now to kind of tell where we're at, but I did want to share that with you, that we're off to a good start. And I love that picture, that's what it's all about. So as you're aware, we presented on this last, last school year about the change in accountability and accreditation. Just a reminder, accreditation is no longer the way that we're measured. And our scores and the accountability framework is still not finalized. As a board, you're typically used to knowing at this point where we landed. We don't have that information. What we do have are our raw pass rate scores in those subjects. So you can see, as we compare the 23, 24 to last school year, we're up in English, we're up in history and social sciences, we're up in mathematics, and we're level in science across the division. I'm excited about that and I think that we should celebrate that and applaud that to all of our staff for their hard work over the last school year. And I, I can only imagine where those scores are going to go this year. They're going to be even better. So I, I have a lot of belief in our staff and our leadership around these things. This is going to be the fun part for me, where I get to brag a little bit. So state averages are what they are. We're a little bit lower in reading, history, we're above, math, we're above, and science, we're above the state average, which I'm excited about. I can handle 2%, you know, over the division, I can handle that. But then we're going to have some more exciting information here to share. As you know, I'm very competitive. So not going to name divisions. All right? So I'm going to hold back a little bit on that. But this is a division that neighbors us, okay, very large division. And you can see where we measured up compared to them in reading, history, math, and science. All right, that's one. Here's another one, a neighboring division, very large, reading, history, math, we're right there with them in science. And I think, I'm excited about that. And when I think about what we've talked about a lot is why not Page? Why not? And that shows you right there how hard our kids are working, our families are working, and our staff is working to make that happen. And I'm really proud to be the superintendent of this school division. So I felt as a board, you would want to see that.
That's cool.
Yeah. 100-day plan update, I've been doing this since day one. We had a great division leadership team meeting yesterday. Dr. Johnson alluded to that. And you could just see the topics that were, that were covered. Ms. Miller's working on a new online purchase order system, which everyone in our schools is going to love, because we'll no longer have the duplicate copies that everybody's got assigned. So we're going to go digital. And thank you, Tanya, for that. I appreciate your leadership on that. Dr. Otterford's been to every school to talk about their CSIPS, which you all are aware of, how we use those for school improvement. The next two bullets, our special education team is doing great things. Their audit closed, their applications approved, those are huge feats that we need to get done. So thank you to Brandy and her team. And annual plan was accepted, I saw that, I just, I ran out of bullets. But yes, I did see that, Brandy. Registration, so we had a big push this year. And I shared at the last meeting about making sure our kids are properly registered for safety reasons and communication. It's been a big push from Blake and his team and our administrators. We went from, last year, we only had about half of our students properly registered at this time, and we're up to 90% as of today. That takes a lot of work and I want to recognize that. It's a lot of, you know, personal phone calls and helping folks out, but it's important. The same for the next bullet. This time, I think two years ago, we had 700 kids not registered with a parent portal account for their parents. We're down to only 100 of them. A lot of effort and intentional work. Our fruit and veggie bars are operational, right Jenny? In all of our schools, we talked about that yesterday in our meeting. Our new fleet that Dr. Johnson shared, I'm so excited and proud that our kids get to be in nice, safe vehicles, as well as our staff members, and I'm proud of that. Ms. Hamel and the rest of our instructional team have worked diligently all summer around the math curriculum that the board approved earlier in the spring. It's arriving, almost all items are here and ready to go. So we're getting that in kids and teachers' hands. And then the stat I wanted to share, one of the things we're tracking from the central office standpoint is our school visits. Everybody in this room and others, and that doesn't capture it all, that's just what we're tracking in our spreadsheet, have made 34 school visits since the start of school. I would argue that number's probably double. But that's been a, a great thing. I, I really enjoyed, today I was walking around and I'm like, where's everybody at? And I go and I check the board and everybody's in a school. So kudos to you guys for all your efforts. And the support is there from my perspective, from our, our central office and our leadership team to get the school year off to a positive start, and I'm really proud of that. So again, our theme is around teamwork. And that's the purpose of that quote, that's the purpose of Row the Boat and what we're trying to do. And I think it's been a great positive start to the year. So that's my update.
Ms. Miller, approval of claims for payment?
Good evening, school board members. You have been provided with a claim certification. Our total operating fund is $543,575.12, with Fund Five Food Service, $25,236.55, and total expenditures, $568,811.67. You've also been provided with a list of claims and check registers. And if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims as presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Painter, second by Mr. Bryant, to approve the claims for payment as presented. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Miller, you guys have anything else?
Yes, thank you again, board. You have been provided with a list of purchase orders over 10,000. The first one being technology, a list of hardware and software for $37,365. The second one is a Sunday system, this is a reading program for Page County Middle School. And notice there that that is coming out of our SIG grant that Mr. Hopkins just talked about, our school improvement grant there at Page Middle. And then the third one is an O and M boiler repair.
I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase orders over 10,000. Second?
Motion by Mr. Everett, second by Mr. Painter, to approve the purchase orders over 10,000. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Painter?
Yes.
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 Dr. Johnson, approval of division crisis plan?
Yes, as stated earlier, we seek your approval of the division crisis response plan.
Make a motion, we approve the division crisis response plan.
Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Albert, and second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the division crisis plan.
Yes.
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 Ms. Clark, the SBA policy update?
For the last meeting, we presented about 10 policies that needed to be reviewed or updated, two of those being of significant changes around the drug testing of student athletes and student drivers, and the implementation of refining our student fees, fines, and charges. And we're asking for that to be an action item. charges. And we're asking for that to be in action. I didn't see.
Make a motion, we approve the BSB policy updates as presented. Second.
Motion by Mr. Overfelt, second by Mr. Painter, to approve the BSB policy updates as presented.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Samples, ACSE grant?
Yes, hello again. In order to meet the deadline of submission for the ACSE grant, which falls before the next board meeting, seeking your approval so that we can file that application with VDOE.
Make a motion, we approve the ACSE grant.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alder, and second by Ms. Painter, to approve the ACSE grant?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Work number four?
Congratulations on a good start and the numbers. Good stuff. Thanks for including the students in that. A lot of teachers remind me, it's our students that work hard as well. We will do the work long, teachers. Had several, at least one, school visit before school started with Dr. Huber, and that was a good visit. A lot of positive things in there. And one of the things that happened, a teacher kind of grabbed hold and said, hey, I'd like to take you down here and show you some of our ideas, right? But we'd like to see that. And you mentioned about the walkthroughs like that. I'm really hoping that principals are engaging the staff, have things ready, that are ready to go with that. And it sounded like they had that going. At the start, I had a lot of staff come up to me, and they really appreciated everything the IT group has done for them all year. A lot of great and positive comments about that. So appreciated that. The mentorship thing, I'll tell you how powerful it is. It's not that a young man went to the mentorship. I'll just tell you a story. He, he was struggling with certain things, and his family was struggling with certain things. And now that entire family is no longer as strong as around their home. And the difference is night and day. And he's so much different. It's just a real blessing to see this kind of thing. And that was because people took time to get around, come around and do this. Had a young lady that transferred, used to be in our school division, transferred back out. She's come back in. She wasn't interested in doing any kind of activities. And because of the staff, the coaches, and her friends, she came back. She's now wanting to get back involved in things, which is really great, because I was really concerned. So that's just the kind of community that we have. It's, we appreciate so much. There are several young folks already at the start, and it's all happening at one time. I was sending text messages to a couple people who were handling with care, and I followed up with the families, and they did an outstanding job. Outstanding job getting those kids set off, starting off the right thing. I want to give a couple shout-outs to a couple people from our community, the Blue Ray High School Booster, Sarita, Judy, and Jake Judy. And Sarita was very instrumental with the rec center when COVID was going on, that she would come down and help mentor and work with the kids with their grades, their classes. Now she's going to do great things there as well. And her husband Jake, we had a, a community member that was struggling, and he and a bunch of other guys took time and went out and got that guy back on track, other people as well. And that's the kind of things we needed. And this week, today, I was had the blessing to play golf in the Wayne Palmer Foundation, and these boys put that on, and they do a great job with it, and they gave out over $3,000 with a scholarship play. So those are the kind of community things that I just love to hear about and, and kind of talk about as well. And just super proud of everybody and all the guys that put in what we're going to do this year. And you can see by the numbers, we're making things happen. It's great. Significant challenges, though, we have, we talked about, but we're still making things happen.
Well, congratulations to Ms. Sophia and Emily. I've actually known Emily since she was born. So it's exciting to see our students wanting to come back into education. And so I celebrate those two young ladies and taking advantage of this opportunity. That's awesome. The maintenance crew, after you listed all the mileage, I mean, that's a lot of mileage. That requires great maintenance workers to maintain vehicles at that mileage. I think that people, most people would have already traded those out a long time ago. So that, that, wow, wow, a great team that you have there. The only thing that I heard that was sad tonight, and it's not really sad, it's, you have to look at it from a positive perspective, it's exciting. The mentor program is obviously incredibly impactful, and the only sad yet exciting is that there are still a lot of students that want to get involved in that. So I challenge the community to try, if you have an opportunity, you know, is it 30, 45 minutes once a week that you know you can dedicate to a student, if you have the time, or you know someone that has the time, that would be willing to invest in these children, they are well worth it. And we don't highlight the mentors very often, but the exceptional people. And they really, they love our upcoming future, and I'm grateful for the time that they put into them. Thank you, Ms. Jeffries Crew, for noticing the uptick in the evenings. That kind of had to create a shift for you all, and you met the need, and I'm really grateful that you did that. And school visits, I'm super excited about the school visits. I love that the central office is in there, in the buildings, with all of our people who are on the front line, and that really encourages them. And I hope that we keep that up throughout the school year. And congratulations to a great start. Thank you all for your hard work.
All right. Well, I'm trying to decipher my notes, but I think Renee hit all my key points with the school visits and the meals, maintenance being fully staffed. I'm definitely kudos to Sophia and Emily. So I didn't want to say anything when she was here, and I've asked her before, she doesn't remember, but when Emily was in fourth grade, she made me this picture. It's like the earth, and it's all these kids are on the earth, and it says, you can counsel the world. And so she has like the teacher aspiring gene within her. So I still have it. And I think every time I see her, I think about that picture. But yeah, just great work. I'm glad we're still on the positivity wave. Let's keep it throughout the year. I'm very tired. I feel like I started the school year with the kids this week. So I know it's, it's hard work and it's tiring, but keep it up. Yeah.
We're on track. I've got the same notes here. Miss Jeffrey's great job in nutrition. I mean, if the kids aren't eating well, then they can't, they can't learn on empty stomachs. So that's so important. And we're so, I'm so glad we're taking care of them. Growing our own, that's fantastic. I think that's, that's a wonderful program. Yeah, can't say enough about that. Really happy that we've got our crisis response document ready and done and finished. I know that you guys are working hard on the training. I can't wait to see the presentation about the, from the RRM. That's going to be interesting. Did I get it right? RRM?
RRM.
RRM. Figure out how to say that acronym. But, so the other thing I wanted, the school visits, I think that just really, I think that is so important and so critical, because people, the teachers and the principals and so forth down in the schools, when they see you going down there and interacting with them, and they get the chance to talk to you one-on-one and not just, you know, through email or something like that, I think it just, it just makes a whole difference in the world. So, well done, well done. And the work that you're doing, it's very evident that it's, we're, we're on the right track. We do have some challenges, but we'll, but you know what? You have plans. I know you have plans that we're going to fix those. And I love our new budget document. Well done. Thank you.
Relax. Same thing, because everybody hit it all. But, but I mean, you can tell by the numbers and just by the presentations and by everything, and the start to the year that you guys are doing phenomenally. From school nutrition, thank you, Ms. Jeffries, to maintenance, and, you know, Ms. Bryant's right. I think long before, our car gets about 290 some thousand. We're not driving it because we have to fix it all the time. But it just shows like what we can do, even to Mr. Hopkins, getting all the grant funding and providing additional resources. All of that goes into what we're seeing, the results that we're seeing in our students. So, so thank everybody for what you're doing. Enjoy a nice, long weekend this weekend, and get ready for continued fun throughout the school year. And, and oh, by the way, Dr. Huber's going to be in the dump tank at the Suncar Festival.
Nice.
So that is, that is Saturday. He gave me a look. I will say what time he'll be in there, but I will tell you this in the afternoon.
I got one alibi. Have you ever thought about calling up Ford or one of those other car manufacturers and asking them, hey, can you guys give us an award for this car that's been going for 280,000 or 270,000?
It's a great suggestion.
Model of your product.
Sometimes they'll do that.
Why don't you donate?
They'll actually buy it off of you because they want to showcase it.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion by Ms. Alder, and second by Mr. Overfelt, to adjourn.
Yes.
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 Yes.